Good evening, everyone. Today is December 2nd, 2019. The 48th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. Counselor Sanchez is excused this evening. All other counselors are present or should be arriving shortly. Next item is our moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Counselor Sanchez. But during this evening's moment of silence, if you would please keep Counselor Sanchez, our colleague, our friend, and his family in your thoughts and prayers as he heals from his medical emergency. So we're going to do it in Spanish as well. And everyone, it's up on the monitor. And of course, us counselors are learning it as we go, right? So... Thank you. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. Our next, we are now on item three, proclamations and presentations. There are none. Item four, economic development. There is none. Item five, administration question and answer period. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, the journal. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the November 18th journal.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Item seven, communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC 480 out of finance and government and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 480 is a license agreement between the City of Albuquerque and Karen Axavives DBA Plaza Don Luis 303 Romero. As we need a two-thirds vote. Is there a second?
Seven.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion pass. That's a, how many do we have here?
Five.
Five, one? Next item is, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC 481 out of finance and government and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 481 is the extension and third amendment of lease between Coronado Center LLC and the City of Albuquerque Forelucky Paws Pet Adoption Center. We need a two-thirds. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Davis Harris Jones.
I'll go. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing M-7 and placing it on December 16th council agenda for action. M-7 is supporting the City of Albuquerque's application pending before the New Mexico Public Regulation Commission to grant Albuquerque Fire Rescue full EMS transport authority.
There's a motion and a second, and we need two-thirds vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Item eight, reports of committee. There are none. Deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Borrego.
Madam President, requiring the, I move deferral of R-201, requiring the Department of Municipal Development to install speedhumps on Dover Street Northwest to improve public safety. Counselors, we deferred our meeting because of the weather. We had a little snowstorm that night. So I am moving deferral until December 16th.
There's a motion, a second, for a deferral. All those in favor, to December 16th. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. I actually failed to actually put this on the deferrals, but I want to defer R-178. This is adopting the capital implementation program of the City of Albuquerque by supplementing current appropriations for the Arena de Cristo Bluff Open Space Land Acquisition. I move deferral to December 16th. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Also, item C, this is myself and Counselor Benton, Committee Sub R-189, amending the composition of the Board of Housing Commissioners for the Albuquerque Housing Authority. I move a deferral to December 16th.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. I think that is it. And with that, we are on the consent agenda. Item nine, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none. I don't know if there's anyone here. So are there any individuals here this evening who are on the consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission? If you are, please stand. There's no one in attendance? Well, we want to thank those who are on tonight's consent agenda for appointment. We want to congratulate them. So Counselor Borrego.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on item 10, general public comments. We have five people signed up to speak. Mr. Don Schrader is our first person this evening, followed by Mr. Tad Naminsky, followed by Loretta Narango Lopez, followed by Leonard Waits, and then finally Simon Polakowski.
Does your God approve us buying much stuff no one needs while millions worldwide are hungry, cold, sick, homeless? According to the Bible, Jesus was born poor, lived poor, died poor. Jesus damned addiction to money. To celebrate Christmas, buying loads of stuff for people who already have far too much is as crazy as celebrating Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday by joining the Ku Klux Klan. Two hundred years ago, about one billion people lived on Earth. Now over seven billion. Sadly, billions worldwide crave the deadly American dream of big house, fancy cars, many high-tech gadgets, jet vacations, eating meat and dairy. A nightmare disaster for life on Earth. Unless we make huge changes, what will the Earth be like in 1993 when babies born now are my age of 74? Do young people who see this and give a damn want to have babies? I was spoiled as a kid. With much help from many people, I changed. And regardless of what other people do, I am responsible for how I travel, what I buy, what I eat, how I poison the Earth. I enjoy living simply and healthy.
Thank you. Tad Naminsky? Loretta Narango Lopez.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Loretta Narango Lopez, and I'm here to, in support of R-19204, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Waits?
Good evening, counselors. I'm here, I'm the executive director of the Martin Luther King Commission, and once again, I'm asking for your support for the MLK Track Meet, which our own Brad Winters created about four years ago. It's been a huge success, and I'm also inviting you to the Martin Luther King March, which will be held on the 18th this year. You're all welcome, and again, I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Simon Polakowski.
Good evening, council. Counselors, I speak for no one but myself. I'm here on the matter of public access. Prior administration spent over a million and a half dollars destroying public access television, and this has continued into this administration. I spoke to the former management of public access before its destruction by the prior administration and this council, and they were, they've been given the educational channel as a public access channel, and they are being asked to make it like, make it without any money. And this seems, you know, rather absurd, but thinking about that the city spent $133 million destroying 200 businesses on Central, this makes absolute sense. Public access, as it was, was a great podium for the average person to reach an average audience, and, you know, where you had an hour, not just two minutes, where you could get what you wanted across. But due to the efforts of the prior council and this council, this has disappeared, especially to the actions of certain counselors. And I noticed that one counselor in particular was highly disturbed by public comment and doesn't even believe in the privacy of his opponents during elections. You know, we were all taught once that our home is our castle, and we had a right to privacy, but obviously, this is only for certain members of society and not the public at large. And if you push against the system, the system is very, very unforgiven. So hopefully, when public access starts up again, it'll be maybe a miracle that it will succeed, but I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our final speaker. We are now on announcements. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, December 9th at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
I will read this for Counsel Gibson. There will be a Winrock Tax Increment Development District Board meeting on Tuesday, December 10th at 1:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor. Counselar Benton.
There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, December 11th at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
So our next item is 12, public hearings are none. Item 13, approvals. So EC 467 agricultural lease between the City of Albuquerque and JT Farms, I move approval. There's a motion, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We did. Sure.
Thank you, Madam President. And we've had some briefings recently about the CASA and Dr. Ginger, and, and I guess there may be some slowdown with the, with the appointment of the POB. Is that, I'll ask the city attorney, I mean, how are we doing with our appointments, and could we be doing better, and does that affect the CASA?
Madam President, Penya, Counselor Harris, the, you're correct that the council had on the agenda tonight, the, one of the replacements for the position that had been vacant since September 2018. Our understanding from our meetings when, during the site visit were that this individual has opted not to move forward. So this will leave the county, the agency, the police oversight board with three vacancies in September 20, I'm sorry, in February of 2020. Currently, there were two vacancies. One, the vacancy that this Mr. Garcia was supposed to take, and then one of the board members resigned. So to stress that, we did meet with each of the counselors last week, or as many as we were able to. Dr. Ginger, in the current monitoring report in paragraph 271 stresses the importance of accelerating the selection process and ensuring that the council has a proper vetting process in place. I do want to commend that the council staff, Director Yada, Deputy Director Melendez, and Julia Moya have been working very hard on filling these vacancies, as has, as has the council. But we do want to stress the importance of this because as it currently stands, the agency is, or not the agency, the board is not in operational compliance, and those vacancies do need to be filled.
Okay. Thank you very much. And one thing, I kind of, I acquiesced to it when it happened, but still wasn't happy at the time. I'm still not happy that they, the legislation took the power away from individual counselors to appoint by district, and I want to raise that again because I think that would be something that would have accountability. Because people could look at me and say, why haven't you appointed? People could look at Counselor Davis and say, why haven't you appointed? But now it's a bureaucratic sort of a process, and I think that process has kind of caused some delay. I don't know if the staff wants to, to address that or not.
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Harris. So yes, we have been working with the legal department and the CPOA to determine some suitable candidates to take those vacant positions. We have four names currently submitted to our vetting process, which includes meeting with individual counselors, and then, of course, meeting with members of the CPOA Board to determine what type of job it entails and kind of get their, kind of get familiar with the process. So we have submitted some names, and they're currently going through vetting, so hopefully we can make those appointments very soon.
Okay. And the follow-up question is, what's the ETA? What does very soon mean?
So, Madam President, Counselor Harris, we're kind of at the mercy of the vetting process itself, so we try to get these candidates in front of at least two or three counselors. That is always difficult to arrange, and then, of course, they have to wait for the next CPOA Board meeting so that they can attend one and see, kind of observe what's going on. So hopefully, by the end of December, after their December meeting, we might have two candidates we can appoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. My apologies for being a little tardy this evening. Ms. Snire, I wanted to follow up on a conversation you and I had earlier today, and I'm sure we'll have a chance to do more about this as we learn more. But we saw some news this weekend that APD was revising and updating its crime stat reports, in part due to some changes in the way they've been doing that work. And I was hoping you could tell us a little bit, or I know Chief Armijo is here, could give us a very quick synopsis of sort of why we're changing those data and what impact that's going to have in terms of how the city responds, in terms of addressing crime and evaluating our effectiveness.
Absolutely. Madam President, Counselor Davis, thanks for that question. We actually just sort of talked about this at a press conference, but for those who weren't able to attend, let me kind of tee it up before I put the expert on, because sometimes when, she knows it so well that when she explains it, I can't understand it, so let me explain it at my level, and then she can take it up to, to her level. Basically, when we came into office, we asked to do quarterly crime statistics briefing. And, you know, like a lot of good ideas, we soon learned why nobody had done that before. But that, come back to that at the end of the story. So the way that our crime statistics are put together right now is that there are a couple of different sources of information. So let's say, for example, there, there's three commercial burglaries along Central. That comes in through the computer-aided dispatch center, that's what we call the CAD, that's 911 calls. Let's say it comes in as three different calls, plus another call from somebody who heard gunshots, and another person who saw a suspicious person running down the street. So you've got five different CAD records, and they're each being logged in as something different. There's some commercial burglary, there's some suspicious activity, and so forth. Then, time moves along, folks are dispatched out to the field. Let's say that they discover a fourth burglary in the next business that the owner hadn't called in yet, so now you've got four burglaries, five Cads, and one of those burglaries does not match the CAD. Then, time goes on, let's say everything goes great, we investigate, we find the person. First of all, just to link those five CAD calls, that's all happening manually. Let's say one of the officers who responded has a typo in their report. That is also getting fixed manually by someone in records looking at it and saying, there's a typo, sending it back to the field officer, sending it back to records. So then we go ahead and catch the person. Then, the police report and the actual information related to the following up on the crime, the investigation, are going in our records management system, the RMS. And that may show up as one record, or it might show up as three records, but it is shockingly not connected to those CAD numbers, except as we do that manually. So right away, you can see that if you just pull the numbers from the CAD, or you just pull the numbers from the RMS, you're going to get two different sets of numbers. Then on top of that, you add, you know, human error, and then also the conversion, as we've talked about many times before, between the UCR and the NIBRs, the federal standards for reporting. All of this caused room for error. But how we just, actually, how we discovered this was, we ended up having about eight vacancies in the records department, which slowed everything down to a snail's pace. So all this manual work that was happening also slowed down. And it was terrible, but it was also sort of a blessing in disguise, because as we came to put together the third quarter statistics, and we started looking at this stuff, and we started being able to, like, layperson be able to catch the discrepancies between different numbers, and then we're told, oh, that's because the manual adjustments haven't happened yet. Then we started to dig in and be able to say, okay, there are definitely some issues with the different systems, and also the, the conversion in UCR to NIBRs. And that's when, on October 21st, I know Counselor Borrego had actually asked for a stats briefing, I think in early September, we didn't give it until October 21st because we were trying to get all this straight, and that's when we came to you with new numbers. We said, these have been adjusted from the last time we talked about numbers, and by the way, you know, there are issues with these systems. And Deputy Chief of Staff Liz Armijo started to sort of give this explanation at that time. So that's how we got here. That's when we discovered it. I just want to be clear that we've been transparent about it, both to you and to the public, to sort of end where I started. This is why, I think historically, other administrations have not given quarterly briefings, because this has been a problem for a long time. But when you give stats on sort of an annual basis, you give yourself all that time to clean up and catch up and get to the right numbers. And by moving to a quarterly, we really exposed all the flaws in the system. That said, we are still committed to that level of transparency. I think the public expects it. Also, it's 2019, so they have every right to expect that level of transparency. So short-term fixes have been adding, so we've staffed up the records management bureau, we brought in temps, we're sort of catching up on that delay. But as we talked about today in the press conference, the long-term solution has got to be a system that is integrated across the board. No, completely easy to understand why, over the years, different systems were piecemealed, they were purchased when there was enough money. That's just how things work, but it is time now to take a step back and have an integrated system that can follow a case from the beginning to the end, that can give us reliable statistics, and that isn't so dependent on manual work. So Deputy Chief of Staff Liz Armijo is here to answer any more technical questions.
Madam President, I realize that took a minute, but if I could ask a follow-up, Ms. Snire, really quickly, perhaps for the chief, if that's appropriate. I hear what you're saying, I totally understand, and having done this work, and I know it's a pain, from small departments to large. When I was in DC, I worked in a record genage for a little while and did that manual review. But I think it's a concern that, you know, typos don't account for a 20% swing, and I do hear and I understand what you're saying about, this is why folks only do this on an annual basis. But there have been now two annual reports that have been done with new APD administration, and it, what I'm hearing is that nobody seemed to have caught those differences, because we were given quarterly reports and never updated those. And so my concern is, did we miss this all along? And these are the data that we're using to decide where to invest our dollars, and so I'm curious, do we have to go back and update NIBR and UCR now? Do we miss this? I don't think this is sort of a quarterly cleanup problem. I think it's more of a systemic, what do we do with this?
Okay. So here's where we are right now, Madam President and Counselor Davis. First of all, the, the questions that you're asking, I appreciate that, because, I mean, we've got, I think, two major issues here. One is just, what are our crime stats? And then the other side of it is, we have to be able to use that data to be able to put our officers in the right areas, to know what to respond to, to know how to respond to them, and to really address the issues going on in our city. So to put it very simply, is we've got an antiquated data management system that is just not efficient. And I'll tell you a couple reasons for some of the shifts in, in our numbers. And so between, let's say, just for an example, you've got someone that goes on vacation over the summer, they come home and they find their home has been burglarized. There's going to be a delay in that reporting, or even a victim of a crime may decide that they choose to report it at a later date. So we, not all crimes that occur are even reported on the date of occurrence. Then you have, you know, the response time, and the officer takes a report, but let's say the report is written as a larceny versus a burglary. It has to go through multiple steps in that process to finally make it to the record system in order to be manually looked at, which is very time-consuming, and then get kicked back in the process, corrected, and now go through the system again as what it actually is, which is a burglary.
But Madam President and Chief, I understand that, and as I said, I did this work, and I understand it, and, you know, even though it was a smaller department, when I was managing this for UNM, we worked with APD to do it because we had to share data. Like, I physically did this work myself, too, and it's not any different than when I did it in the early 2000s. It is still very paper-intensive. But that doesn't account for the difference between us saying that rapes went down 30% or 3% when we doubled the number of people in crimes against children and sex crimes, for example, when the, so when, what we're, what I'm trying to get at is trying to understand, I know delayed reporting happens in some areas, but these are big differences, and I know we're getting to them now and we recognize them. I'm saying, how far back does this go? Are our numbers in 2017 and 2018 wrong, and we just figured it out in the last quarter? Or is this the only quarter where this happened?
So Madam President and Counselor Davis, here's what I understand. As you, I'm sure, are aware, from, you know, in 2018, we switched from UCR to NIBRs. At some point in time, there were some of those numbers that went into some kind of a black hole, if you will. And at some time, we recalibrated, we went through the system, and those numbers, wherever they went, they, they appeared from the previous system and to the current system, and that was, those were some of the calculations, from what I understand, occurred. Where we are right now, and that's where I think that we have to focus on as far as making the changes to move forward and be successful with our reporting, is we, we have realized the fact that our data system is inadequate. And we are well aware of that, and we are taking steps to fix that. The short-term fixes, whether it be adding personnel and records, we've done, but again, it's like putting a Band-Aid on a larger issue. We're doing the best we can right now, still, to be transparent with the, with the data that we have. The data's getting calculated, we just, as far as analyzing it and being able to extract it and explain it, that's where we're having the issues right now. So I think at this point, where we are right now is, we are making those changes because we will not, we cannot be successful overall until we, we fix that.
And Madam President, Counselor Davis, just to, to give a little more shortcut to your answer, yeah, we got to go back. We have to go back, because we can't sit here and say that they're right, or we can't sit here and say that they're wrong. So we have to internally pick a cutoff date, and I think it's going to have to be sort of when we got here, because going back before that with the change in- of when we got here, because going back before that, with the change in leadership, there's change in command, it's going to be difficult, and we're in this, we've been in this situation so many times in APD, where we've had to stop and go back. And, really, from the day we got here, whether it was the use-of-force policies that had to stop and be rewritten, or, you know, we, there's countless examples. So, this is another one, we've got to stop and go back. I think we have to prioritize doing that for 2018 and 2019, and then, as time allows, and as we get staffed up, we can go back before that. But, I think trying to go back, you know, 10 years, just not a smart use of resources, given how limited those resources are. So, it, to just sort of cut to the chase on that question, that's where we are.
And, Madam President and Ms. Nyar, thank you, I appreciate that, and I'll sort of leave it at this for now. I know we'll have a chance to do this more, and I look forward, thank you, Chief, and I know we look forward to a more in-depth conversation about how this, and what we do next. I agree, we don't have to go back forever, but I do think we need enough to tell us if all the things we've been investing in are working, or if it appears they're working. I'm concerned, having heard from folks in the department, and hearing this, and from our IT folks, that we talk about some of those APIs, or some of those data sharings, that there may perhaps be systems that we've, as you mentioned, Chief, just didn't get transferred over, and so we've been whole units that are holding data that we may not have, that we need to help us make those decisions. Frustratingly, and I think you and I mentioned this earlier today, I've been waiting on a single report on gun violence in the city from RTCC since April, with six emails asking for it, and I can't get a single response on the status of gun violence in our city out of the data we have. I realize we have a data problem, but it's also, we have to make some very quick decisions here about budgets, and where we put dollars, and whether we invest in more CSP units, CAC units, or what do we do, and what's working, and I know that we all share that frustration. I do want to say, Madam President, and then I'll be quiet, I do think it's important, the City Council has talked often about staffing levels and crime reports, and I think over and over, we've struggled with how to take a more proactive role in being on top of those, so that we're not getting, for example, July stats in September at Counselor Borrego's request. I know we mentioned that the numbers had been updated, but as I recalled, and I went back and looked at the video earlier today, I think we mentioned, or the administration mentioned that shooting numbers had been updated, but there was no mention that all of the numbers were different, not by significant numbers, because the PowerPoint that was presented to us had a July date on the bottom of it. It was still those early data, and so I want to be sure that we do that. I think as we move into a new council and a new year, I'd love us to revisit an idea I discovered Counselor Winter had had years ago, which is to maybe create a Public Safety Committee in the City Council, so that on a monthly basis, we have some counselors who are watching those numbers, who are asking those questions, who can help stay on top of that a little more, and raise the flag when we need to add money, and raise the flag a little earlier when we're seeing CASA issues, or stat issues, or staffing issues, so that we don't get flat-footed on it. I'd love us to consider that with a new council, and thank you, Madam President, for the courtesy this evening, my apologies for being late.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I also have a question about that. So, it sounds like we've been, this, this problem in the accounting for, for, for crime in the city is something that's been going on for years, there hasn't been a, suddenly we haven't decided to do something differently, and then found that there was a problem. So, while it's, while it's been inaccurate, it's, we've been at least consistently inaccurate over the years. So, I, so I still have the question, then, why did we show, and I know you tried to explain that to, and I understood what you said, but what, what still remains unanswered for me is, if, if the, if the accounting errors have been consistent, why did we show such a bounce? And that was when, July? When did that report come out?
July, yeah. So, Council President Pena, Counselor Gibson, I don't think we can really conclude that they've been consistently inconsistent, or, you phrased it well, but I think it was like, you know, consistently wrong. I don't think there's any reason to conclude that, because we, you know, we just weren't here, and we just don't know. But, I think that, as Deputy Chief of Staff Armijo talked about, there was the, the change in reporting systems that caused, like, the big change, and also, you know, the CSP, the rape cases that Counselor Davis mentioned is a perfect example of sort of the perfect storm of delayed reporting, plus, you have few enough that, you know, the change of 10 can be, you know, 10 percentage points of change, and then also, you have a real change in how something is reported, to how it is ultimately charged, or, you know, whatever happens at the end of the case. So, we also just had a couple of those areas where the change was significant, because it was all three of those factors coming together.
Okay. Also, one last question. So, we get an annual report, that's, that's the, the standard, right? And doesn't that come out in the summer?
Madam President and Counselor Gibson, we can do the annual, we can really, we can pull those stats at any time. Again, the issue is, though, how up-to-date they will be. So, we typically do...
When is the annual reporting?
UCR report.
When is the annual reporting?
I will follow up with you on that.
Okay.
I can get you the exact time.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I'm terribly confused. So, how long have we been doing these reports? From two years now, right?
Council President Pena and Counselor Jones, we've been doing quarterly stats for two years, but we've been doing, you know, the annual reporting, which I think comes out in August of each year, to the FBI since forever.
So, we did it last year?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an issue there? Have you gone back to look? What was...
Council President Pena, Counselor Jones, this is what I was trying to express earlier to Counselor Davis's question, we need to go back and check, we do.
So, if I can put this all together, so if 2018 was wrong, then we're going to have to check that to make sure that we get 2019 wrong, and are we going to go back to 20, get it right? Are we going to go back to 2017? I mean, where does this, what are we, when do we think this started, and what do you think is happening? You said something about quarterly reports now, but obviously, it isn't just quarterly reports, it is reporting.
Council President Pena, Counselor Jones, yes, my point on the quarterly reports is that it should, you know, instead of having a whole year to kind of clean up the data, as has historically been done, quarterly, we're getting more of those data reported before the manual cleanup has happened. That was my only point with the quarterly reports. As I, as I tried to articulate earlier, we want to go back, we have to go back to 2018 and 2019. Going back before that seems like maybe not the best use of limited resources, but we can, we can do that if we want, but like, at least if we do 2018 and 2019, we have year-over-year. We don't know that there's a problem, but I don't think we can confidently say that there's not a problem, and so we have to go back. Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Borrego, followed by Counselor Benton.
Today, when we had the press conference, I was walking through APD, and, you know, I was in government for 28 years, so that's not saying anything about my age, but I was walking through and thinking, "This place looks exactly how it did 20 years ago. There's nothing that's changed, even the railing, the flooring, the walls." And, I mean, we're getting back here to basically technology, because you're telling me that our, you know, you're doing these updates manually, you're having to go back manually, our systems are archaic. And, so I guess to me, and, and, you know, God help the people that have to go back manually and do all this stuff, and, and I'm glad that we have a deadline of when we start, and when we move, how we move forward, and I'm glad that we discovered this problem, because it is a major problem, and I've seen it in, all over Facebook, and all over, you know, social media. What I'm concerned with is, how do we move forward from here? And how do we make it better? Because it seems to me, as, you know, counselors, our position is that we need to look at our technology, and we need to look at what, what APD needs in order to not have this kind of problem again. And, moving forward into the future, you know, we, we had a press conference today, and we talked about, you know, how do we be smarter than the criminals? And, you know, criminals are pretty smart. I mean, they're using these things a mile a minute, and, or, you know, they're just, it's just crazy. We are at a place in our government where we need to look at, you know, how millennials are communicating, how our next generations are communicating, Gen X, how we're providing information to the public. But, we also need to look at the cost for that, for, for making that leap forward. And I think that, I would like to see, not only you all go, go back and correct these numbers, and whatever that deadline is, but, and come back to us with the corrected versions, but I would also like to see some sort of proposal in the budget that brings forward, you know, technology that's needed, that in order to take our, our police department from a place that I saw 20 years ago, to a place that we should be at now, to a place that we should be at in the future. And, and those numbers, I understand, will probably not be cheap, and I know we're going to the state legislature to ask for money, but I think that we, as a council, also need to look at our budget, and determine if we're really going to be smarter than the criminals, that we have that technology available to us, and that we are able to come up with the correct information, and that we don't have to wait, what Counselor Davis said, what, since April to now, for the correct information. So, in addition to, and I know this puts a burden back on, on the administration, but it's important that we come back in our budget cycle with some recommendations that actually say, you know, we need a new whatever software, or whatever system that will work, work to, to spring us forward. So, that's kind of what I have to say.
Ms. Nyar.
Agreed, thank you. Council President Pena, Counselor Borrego, completely agreed, and, you know, this council, right off the bat, made some difficult decisions that prioritized hiring 400 new officers, and we continue to believe that that is absolutely the, the most essential piece to all of this, because even if you're talking about records, you have, by having more officers in the fields, you have fewer reports per officer, you have more time to be able to do these things correctly the first time, you have, you know, just more hands doing the work, and in theory, that should make it less error-prone. So, that continues to be the first priority. We're going to see how we do with the legislature, and then we will absolutely have targeted requirement, targeted requests in the coming budget cycle, and in the coming capital cycle, as there were in the last capital cycle, that have already been funded for advances in technology.
I would also encourage you, and, and very much, and, and also APD, to look at the way people communicate, because the way baby boomers communicate, the way Gen X communicates, the way millennials communicate, is very different. And if we're still looking at, you know, the silent generation, or the baby boomers, and we're not, we're not keeping up to speed on the way we communicate, and the way we communicate to the public, and communicate this information amongst departments, then we're missing the boat, and then we're going to be in a world of hurt in five years from now, or whatever, because we'll still be in this archaic place, and I, I do not want to see our city in that place, because we have a lot of potential.
Counselor Benton.
So, listening to this, and going back to the original explanation, thank you for both of those explanations, it stands to reason that if we were, and I'm not suggesting that we should, go back to 2016, 2015, wouldn't we always find the same kind of lag? And that, you know, at those points of time, and I know they weren't reporting quarterly, but just even on their annual, at those point, those were taken at a point in time, and some of those reports that were initiated prior to that point in time, were still filtering through into the next year, right? So, it makes me wonder, I mean, of course, with this great information technology system that we, we, we all agree that we should have, or a better one, anyway, is a quarterly reporting, I mean, are we just setting ourselves up for another concern? And, and, I mean, it's a point-in-time count, is kind of the way I'm hearing it, Ms. Nyar, and am I wrong?
Ms. Nyar.
Counsel President Pena, Counselor Benton, that's a good way to talk about it, it's a snapshot. At any given moment, it's a snapshot, it's more likely to be error-prone the more often you take that snapshot. So, I think if we were to have a monthly reporting out on stats, everyone would just have to be okay with the fact that they're going to shift by the next month, because that's going to happen. But, what we need to understand is, what is that baseline of shift that we should be comfortable with and expect, and what is outside of that norm? Which is another reason that we really do have to at least go back to 2018, so that we can say, "Okay, just normal course of business, you're going to see a shift of X%. But here, in these periods, we saw a shift that was greater, because the lag time just doesn't account for where the problems were."
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I think we're done with public comment, and I just will add that, you know, with everything that's out there about the crime stats, I, you know, I just really appreciate the fact that we're trying to get crime stats more frequently. You know, for my constituents, it's always an issue about what's happening in our community, and, you know, sometimes, what's the saying, "The road tells paved with good intentions." So, thank you very much, appreciate it. So, we are now on final actions. Counselor Borrego, 085.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselors, in reviewing the redevelopment fund, and I don't know if Chris Moorhead is here tonight, I don't see him in the audience, but we were discussing how to replenish, and we've been kind of discussing this for a while, especially since we did a, a little audit on the fund, and we were realizing that there was, you know, there's money going out for these projects, but there's not really money coming back into that fund. And, in your packet tonight, there's a discussion about how we could possibly, when we do these deals, using redevelopment funds, we could, and typically, they're public-private partnerships, we could maybe have a little city lease fee equal to about 10% of the annual increment, incremental abated taxes. And, what it would do is, it would generate funding back into the fund, so that we are replenishing the fund. And, so, this bill is designed, actually, to do that, and to create a, a process by, whereby we would, we would be doing this. And, so I, I urge your support, if there's any questions, I don't, I think Stephanie, maybe you could help me, or Stella.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Argyle.
Yeah, and Madam President, Madam Vice President, Alan Varela, from our office, who has been working in an integral in this project, is here and is available to answer any questions.
Okay. Before we do that, why don't we go to public comment? We have Mr. Nemenski.
My name is Ted Nemenski. Here is, I hear all, all kinds of say about, all kind redevelopment, economic development, and now municipal development, etc., etc. Well, here is, I know also private redevelopment, development, redevelopment, that downtown area, what's going on. Yes, this is, let me go back. This state is richest state in the, in the United States when it comes to minerals. What I'm coming, you know, how, here is how much land owned by the state, governments, 70%, only 3% private. Two-thirds employed by governments, all kind governments. And, where is economic development to private sector? Are you expecting, like in communist Russia, owned it, I mean, employ everyone? That's what is go? I'm sorry, that's what happened. So, anyway, here is group, very small group, benefits, whoever is closest, like I say, this said before, to government. Lot of money, yes, being changed around. Here is 10%. Lot of money, yes, being changed around. Here is 10%. Well, was, how much you get if somebody, the city, only charging for rent $1? What is percentage of $1? Thank you.
Thank you. That's our only speaker on that item. So, is, any questions from counselors? Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess, I, I, I don't feel real comfortable in voting on this, because it seems rather complex to me. It sounds like a good idea, but it's, I don't really feel like I've got a really good understanding of it. And, you know, we didn't have an FGO meeting, so we didn't get an opportunity to talk about it then. And I was wondering if the sponsor would consider a deferral for two weeks?
Sure.
Okay, then I'll move for a deferral.
Yeah.
Two-week deferral.
Second.
So, there's a motion, there's a motion in second for a two-week deferral. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Item B, we deferred. C, we deferred. E, Counselor Benton and Davis, resolution 202.
Thank you, Madam President. Item E is R202, approving a non-binding intent to form a tax increment for a development district comprised of the University of New Mexico's South Campus, thus promoting economic development, continued cooperation between the city and the University of New Mexico, incenting potential transit and wise energy use, and creating a destination sports and entertainment district. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in second for a due pass. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Madam President, I think we have a presentation.
Oh, presentation first. Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, Madam President, members of the council, we have a short presentation. I understand that some of the materials may be in your briefing packet. Does, does that sound right? That you've had, you've had, so you've had some materials? Okay, great. Thank you. Again, good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council on the joint effort between the city and the university to create a tax increment development district for South Campus, which would enable new economic development opportunities and create community enhancements for underserved area of the city. With me this evening are key representatives of the university on this project, Teresa Constantinitis, Senior VP for Administration and Finance, as well as Chief Executive Officer for Lobo Development, and Harry Ralcon, our Development Consultant/Attorney, a recognized expert on TIDS in New Mexico. As you may know, for many years, the university has endeavored to bring various commercial enterprises to South Campus to complement the existing institutional uses, as individual development projects, but also as a master plan development with third-party developers. Each of these efforts have failed, I believe, because of a lack of comprehensive, integrated vision, and more importantly, a cohesive implementation strategy to address the significant infrastructure challenges of the area. Thus, this prime area near the metro core remains an undeveloped eyesore, an obviously skipped-over infill location. The request of the council today is the result of several years of conversation between the city and UNM, particularly with the co-sponsors, sponsors, Counselors Benton and Davis, but also with the city administration and the planning department, on how our two public entities can work together to overcome these obstacles. As a result, we now, we now have a broader integrated division, excuse me, vision that includes the expansion of our Science and Technology Park as an economic stimulus, and enhance community services and amenities, such as improved transportation, transit, and parking, the incorporation of public plazas, parks, pedestrian paths, recreation fields, and trails, along with much-needed commercial uses. Importantly, through the TID, we use a portion of the newly created tax revenue associated with the, with the proposed development to fund these public improvements on a pay-as-you-go basis to create a dynamic regional destination and sense of place. I've prepared a short presentation, and, and I've, you confirmed you have a copy of that in your briefing materials today. I can walk through the presentation if you want, or just to hit a few highlights. And I need to mention that the presentation is now available on the Lobo Development Corp website, which is lobodevelopmentcorp, all one word, dot com. Also need to mention that we have reviewed the council's proposed non-binding resolution, as well as the mayor's transmittal, and are in full support. So, Madam Chair, members of the council, I can go through the, the presentation using the overhead if you'd like, or I can just verbally give you some highlights.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I think since this is something that affects the entire city, it might be nice if you would go ahead and go through the presentation with the overheads, so people at home can see what's going on.
Yeah, be happy to do that. Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Jones, be happy to do that. I will likely need some technical assistance here. Is it, is it right side up, or is it reverse? Okay, very good. This is just a title slide, again, on the joint city/university of New Mexico tax increment development district for South Campus. This slide talks about the context of the, of the property, which, which is our entire South Campus, about 300 acres. It's adjacent to major employment concentrations, higher ed campuses, including CNM, and of course, the University of New Mexico. There, this is the locale within the metropolitan area of our sports and entertainment facilities. Our market research folks have identified this area really south of I-40 as a retail desert for the metropolitan area. So, there's some retail and commercial development opportunities to serve this, this area of the, of the metropolitan area. But the, an advantage is that it is, that is adjacent to major regional infrastructure, including I-25, South diversion channel for storm drainage, and, and other kinds of, of regional type infrastructure. This slide here talks about the joint TID concept. There's an alignment of goals between the university in terms of economic development and the city, which is important to recognize. Also promoting the community amenities and creating an attractive gateway for the southern entrance to our city, as well as to further transit and energy-wise usage. The goal here is to create a regionally significant employment, sports, entertainment, commercial district. And the, the joint aspect of this project between two governmental entities is extremely important. This is one of the first examples of where a public landowner, I think, is partner partnering with the local government to create a tax increment district to fund public, public infrastructure. So, there, it's unique in, in that way. This slide here, and there's, we've only got about eight or nine slides here, but this slide talks about the nature of the proposal, which is really two-pronged. It's an expansion of our Science and Technology Park for economic development. We really haven't had, although we have currently about 700,000 square feet of space, we've got about 2,000 employees, we have a nationally recognized high school and middle school called the Albuquerque Ames. And our, we haven't had really any new construction opportunities in really over a decade. But our, I think, as, as Teresa will talk about in a minute, our research collaborations, however, have increased significantly in the last several years. So, we have opportunity, opportunities to locate those on South Campus and stimulate economic activity. As I mentioned previously, there isn't a market demand for commercial in this area. And it's, it's driven by residents within the area, but also largely by the great number of employees. Over 100,000 employees are located within three miles of this area, as well as the students, and that attend both UNM and CNM, about 40,000 students. And finally, we have visitors to the South Campus athletic and entertainment facilities of about 1.3 million visitors per year. This development, as you'll see, will generate significant new tax revenue for, for the city, as well as the other governmental entities. Yeah, but we need new infrastructure, new and expanded infrastructure and, and amenities. This slide here highlights the, the, kind of the broad strokes of the land uses within the 300-acre South Campus. We've got the Science and Technology Park that comprises about 67 acres. We're programming about 360,000 square feet of new office and R&amp;D space for that area, as well as approximately 145,000 square feet of retail and several parking structures. The Lobo Village Entertainment District, which is the, which is the yellow area shown on this slide, is, is programmed for about 160,000 square feet of, of commercial, including a hotel site. The Town Center, which is the brown, large block of property off of Gibson, is programmed for the most intense commercial uses, approximately 400,000 square feet of, of space there, plus about 75,000 square feet of mixed residential and commercial. And then the green band in the center of the, of the district is really our athletic complex and institutional parking areas. This is an illustrative plan that shows the, how the property would be developed, particularly the, the undeveloped areas of the Science and Technology Park and the commercial Town Center off of Gibson. It, we've got about 90 acres of land that's available for development, vacant land for development. We have, we also have some infill sites on our Science and Technology Park. Our plans that we've developed so far, in conjunction with the planning department, are consistent with both the city plan and the plans and the university plans. And, again, we're stimulating economic development through the expansion of the park and the provision of commercial services. Our independent analysis shows that about 4,000, excuse me, 4,000 square feet, excuse me, 4,000 jobs are, permanent jobs are, are, are possible with this development plan. And you'll see here shortly, a significant tax revenue potential as well. Here's kind of the, the meat of the financial analysis, the financial feasibility that was done through independent modeling as well. We've assumed about, at this juncture, a 25-year term of the, of the, of the TID, and programmed 75% potential increment. As many of you know, the increment of, of both gross receives tax and property tax is limited, because there are only certain components of those revenue streams that are available for the TID. We've assumed city, county, and state participation. And so, combined, those three entities would generate about $516 million of tax revenue combined over this 25-year period. About 300 million of that would go to the TID for public improvements and infrastructure. The breakout for the city is, is about 186 million. About 88 million of that would go to the district, and about 100, almost 100 million would be available for city coffers for other, for other uses. This slide here shows the, the improvements that we're programming within the district, and our cost estimates. Again, about 17 million would be needed for roads, water, sewer, and drainage facilities, the basic infrastructure. About 14 million is, we've allocated for parks, trails, and landscaping. About 60 million for parking structures. We've got three parking structures in the plan. 70 million for economic development initiatives and facilities. About 38 million for transit, energy, and other public facilities. And a little over a million for regional transportation improvements, most likely I-25 related, which total about, about 300 million. And finally, this is the next steps, or the process that we are proposing to go through next. First is the, is the creation of a, of a joint city/unm working group to work on fleshing out the development plan, the financial plan, and the development agreement. Then making those documents available to various entities within the university and the city for review and recommendations. And finally, and those, those entities are listed on the next slide here. Ultimately, though, the Board of Regents and this council would need to approve it. And we are, we are proposing some target dates of, of May 12 for the Board of Regents approval of the final documentation, as well as city council approval on June 1st of 2020. So, with that, I will answer any questions that you might have, or turn it over to Teresa Constantinitis for a couple of closing remarks. Madam, Madam President?
Counselor Benton.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, just a couple of details. On the, the maps that are shown, these aren't incorporated as any sort of exhibit. So, there are a couple of things, you know, minor things that we've discussed, just in, in discussions with you and Mr. Ralcon. One is the intersection of university and Gibson, which most likely is going to be affected by this project. The other is Geneva Zeroyo, which is a, a storm drainage facility, formerly a storm drainage facility, but the city has been interested, and the neighbors have been interested in making a connection through that, as sort of a linear trail and naturalistic type part, that would serve the neighborhood and provide connectivity to the neighborhoods on South Yale to this project. Is there anything to prevent discussions of those two details with regard to this and, and future mapping of the project?
No, Madam, Madam Chair, and Counselor Benton, or Madam President, Counselor Benton, no, I'm glad you brought those up. We're certainly very much aware of at least those requests, and perhaps a few others, that can be incorporated as we roll up our sleeves and finalize, finalize the documentation. Thank you.
Any other questions? You were going to have someone else come up and...
Yes.
I didn't get her name, I apologize.
Madam President and counselors, my name is Teresa Constantinitis, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Finance Administration, also the CEO of the Lobo Development Corporation. And it is a real pleasure for me to be here representing UNM President Garnet Stokes and the UNM Board of Regents with regard to this important new collaboration between the City of Albuquerque and the University of New Mexico. Joint efforts between the state's largest city and its largest higher education institution help us accomplish our mutual goals of job creation and economic development. These types of efforts are vital to improving the quality of life for all our citizens, and particularly those in underserved populations who desire access to greater opportunities. Kim Murphy has highlighted very well the joint benefits of a South Campus TID in terms of community development. But I'd also like to briefly note that the TID- But I'd also like to briefly note that the TID will also allow for expansion in research, entrepreneurship, and student engagement, and point out that such expansions can and will be built upon our other recent successful collaborative partnerships. UNM has multi-year cooperative agreements in place with the Air Force, Sandia National Labs, and the Los Alamos National Labs. And these agreements include both research collaborations to create and disseminate new knowledge, but also student internships, which will grow and that we know will often turn into long-term employment. We also look forward to building off of the successes associated with Innovate ABQ, the Downtown Rainforest, and the positive business development outcomes associated with STC.com, which is Tech Transfer, and the Innovation Academy in Albuquerque. We know joint efforts between the city, UNM, and our other key partners have been successful, and we are excited to see the growth and also the opportunities that will be enabled by the formation of a TID on the South Campus. So I'd like to thank you very much for considering this bill.
Thank you. With that, before we go to questions from the Counselors or comments, public comment, Ms. Kim Murphy?
We're in there.
Oh, okay, this is you. Oh, this is both of you.
Yeah.
So you signed up for public comment as well?
We just wanted to make sure we were able to be heard. And I knew you were eagerly awaiting us. Thank you.
So we will -- Counselors, any questions? Comments? Counselor Borrego followed by Counselor Gibson.
I actually don't have questions of you, Kim. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
I have questions of our legal department. First of all, I'd like to know what a non-binding intent is.
Madam President and Counselor Borrego, I will have Alan Barella come and answer that question regarding the specific project. Thank you.
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Borrego, a non-binding resolution of intent is one of the obligatory steps that the council has to make to allow the city to go through and enter into discussions about actual terms of the TID. So it's a non-binding resolution saying --
So it's kind of a placeholder?
Yes, it simply says, move forward to discuss this in more concrete terms.
Thank you. Okay, so my question, I have a couple of questions, actually. So first of all, I'd like to say that I support the partnership. I think it's great that we're looking at working with UNM, and that goes because I'm a Lobo, of course. But I do have some serious questions. And this may be more for the administration. In terms of TIDs citywide, do we have sort of a roster, I guess, of how many TIDs we have in the city and how much tax abatement we're doing? Because, you know, we actually are abating those taxes to future generations. So I'd kind of like to know, you know, is there kind of a limit that we're setting in policy that, yeah, we support our TIDs, but yet there's a place where, you know, everything goes to our future generations to pay for? And that concerns me a little bit, and I'd just like to know if, who's keeping tabs on that?
Mr. Ral.
Madam President and Counselor Borrego, actually, we keep tabs of that because we require it through as part of our annual audit in the CAFRA that's being put together here that will be released here in the next 10 days or so. I think at this point, we have about nine TIDs that we have in the city. And we are, our folks in the mayor's office at least keep track of the membership and the number of folks who are on them. A lot of the TIDs and a lot of the PIDs that we have actually have council staff, or counselors, actually, on them as well. As it relates to the amount of money that's been obligated by each of these, we'll have that number in the CAFRA. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can get that to you as soon as that's put together. I did want to say, Madam President and members of the council, the presentation you've seen before is the University of New Mexico's proposal to the city. I just want to be clear that we have not negotiated any of these ideas, are not sort of, if you will, locked in stone. There's, we have not engaged in any negotiations other than bringing it to this point. We think it makes sense, simply because of some of the remarks Mr. Murphy made about we have a lot of vacant land in that part of the city that could be utilized in a better fashion for both the benefit of the university and the city and create a vibrant area for the community. But the land use issues and the discussions are just simply a proposal they've put forth to the city. And so with your approval of this resolution, that now gives us the opportunity to form the committee that would actually engage in the conversation with the university. And we obviously would welcome someone from the city council staff to be part of that conversation, simply because at the end of the day, it requires the mayor and the council to come together to make the final decision as it relates to being involved in a TID. So, but at this point, this is a great working document and to start the conversation.
So that's kind of why I asked the question about the placeholder. I guess that's what kind of essentially we're approving. I also wanted to mention, and Mr. Murphy, this is important to you as well and to your nonprofit, I did receive an email from AMAFCA who's had some concerns, and I didn't see them on your list of partners. But I think they're an important partner, especially in light of that they are funded entirely by property taxes. And I received this email from Bruce Thompson, who's the vice president of AMAFCA, and he's kind of speaking on behalf of the board. And the issue is that when these taxes are abated, then AMAFCA organizations, like AMAFCA, and there's other, I'm sure, other organizations that do not receive, you know, they are funded entirely on city and county tax revenues. And so when the taxes are abated, then AMAFCA doesn't receive those revenues. And yet, they have to go in and do all the storm drain sort of improvements. So it may be a group that you all want to sit down with and talk with and, you know. So I have some kind of reservations for that reason, and I just wanted you to know that.
Well, thank you. Madam Chair and Counselor Borrego, let me address both those questions. The TID is different than, say, an industrial revenue bond where there's actually is tax abatement. The TID actually just takes a portion of those taxes, grocery cease taxes or --
Property taxes.
-- property taxes that would normally come to the city and deposits them with a separate entity, the TID Board.
Correct.
But for the purpose of public investment in infrastructure and other facilities. And so we have programmed in, and our engineers have programmed, several major improvements in this area for drainage that AMAFCA would benefit from. So that it's sort of a sep -- we've kind of peeled off as a separate revenue source to address those needs in that area.
I'm just suggesting that you may want to sit down with them and members, you know, Jerry Labato or --
Absolutely.
-- folks to discuss this issue, because if they sent us an email, they must have some reservation.
Well, we'd be happy to meet with them and go through our proposal and address any concerns they might have.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great idea. I'd love to see that property developed, and I like what I've seen so far, so I wish you well. I do have a couple of questions that might be a little premature for these questions, but I'll give them a shot anyway. So are you anticipating going after the state portion of GRT as well as local?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. And then what about the county? Are you involving the county as well?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Counselor Gibson, we would go after county share as well. Our, certainly following this meeting, assuming there is a favorable vote on the non-binding resolution, we will begin conversations with those entities as well.
Right.
But obviously, this is a district or a structure that is put in place by the city as the sponsoring entity.
Great.
And we need to start here.
One last question. So this would also involve property taxes as well as grocery cease taxes?
It would, yeah. Madam Chair, Counselor Gibson, it would involve property taxes on the improvements only. It is our intent to keep the land in control of the Regents of New Mexico and pursuant to state law, state land is exempt from, land itself is exempt from property tax.
Right.
So we intend to ground lease the property. So our financial models have included property tax, a share of the property tax, on the improvements only.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. If there's no other questions, Counselor Benton and Davis to close.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, I just want to say thank you to our partners at UNM. Kim, it's been great to see you again. Ms. Costanitis, thank you so much for working on this, and Harry. This has been a long time coming. I remember these conversations before I was on the city council about what to do down there and seeing different versions. I'm excited to see that we see the potential here. I do think this is unique. It's a chance for UNM and the city to both partner, to benefit each other, and to grow that community. And for those of us who live down there, I think it would be very exciting to have a conversation about what cool new retail might be an asset for that community. And I know that retailers are already talking to us about looking for new locations there. There's just not a lot of open space in southeast, but there's certainly a market. So I think this is great. I'm encouraged to see the city and the council moving forward. And as Mr. Ral said, I think we can do this quickly, but I think we can do it collaboratively as well. So I thank Counselor Benton for allowing me to join on this, since it's technically in his district, but certainly one we all get to share. So thank you all for your work on this and urge your support.
Thank you.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President, yeah. The need for retail, and specifically food retail, has been something that neighborhoods in that south part of District 2 have been interested in a long time. And as Counselor Davis said, if you look at the Gibson Corridor and the South I-25 Corridor or other places where it's, you know, difficult to just get good food. So I'm hoping that one of those boxes I see on there is a grocery store. That was something that was actually considered years back as part of what became the Broadstone Development there, just to the east of this site. And it was a disappointment to the neighborhoods around there when they weren't able to get a grocery store in there. So that's a big goal of mine. And yeah, I hope we can make this work, and it seems like a great partnership of benefit to not only the university but for the community. So thanks.
Thank you.
Urge your support.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor for Resolution 202. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on F.
Thank you.
Counselor Winter and myself, R 204. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. R 204, establishing a process for conducting a series of community meetings and report to consider previous sector development plan protections in the land use and zoning appeal process. Move a due pass.
There's a motion and a second for a due pass. And I actually have a committee sub, I mean, a floor sub, sorry.
This first ever.
And I think they'll be passing it out now. So I'll go ahead and make this in the form of a motion just to introduce floor sub R 19204. And what it is, is I don't have a brief description of it, but it's establishing a process for conducting a series of community meetings and a report to help promote, preserve, and protect Albuquerque's traditional historic communities. And Counselor Winter actually introduced his resolution, and this kind of just dwindles it down a little bit, just to talk about the historic communities. We have over, had over 60 sector plans in the city of Albuquerque. And through this discussion and through a lot of community input, there's been a lot of discussion about our historic neighborhoods and what do we do and what can we do to ensure that we have protections in place for those communities. In my floor sub, I actually outline some of those historic neighborhoods in our community. It doesn't mean that those are all the communities, or that we could, you know, delete communities that don't want to be part of this process. But as I stated in the committee, is that, you know, Albuquerque is so unique to the rest of the United States, and we just have a really unique opportunity here that we can actually, you know, get some input on how to preserve some of our historic neighborhoods, even though there's some protections in place already. But what we can do to kind of further those protections, and really, all this essentially does is we have a few meetings, we get community input, and at the end of the day, we can utilize that input or not. So I know we have Shanna here. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the floor sub.
Madam President, sure, I'd be happy to do that. So what this bill calls for is a series of public meetings to be held in six specific communities. Those are listed on page two. I'm sorry, five specific communities. It would be six meetings total, a minimum of six meetings total. The vision is one would happen in each of those communities, and then a sixth meeting to kind of summarize all the findings and recommendations that came out of those initial five meetings. Those recommendations would be submitted to the council, and the council would choose what to do with those recommendations, either incorporate them as a part of the future IDO annual update process, or use them to inform the oncoming community planning area assessment process or update, or inform a future comprehensive plan update.
Counselor Davis, before I go to you, I just wanted to actually say, so I would need a second on the floor sub, but I intend to defer it because it is a floor sub. So with that, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to follow up with Ms. Schultz's question. Ms. Schultz, if you know, can you tell us when these neighborhoods are scheduled for the CPA community planning process already as a part of the IDO?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, what the IDO calls for is for this body to approve that order, and I believe we're expecting to receive those recommendations from the Planning Department either sometime this month or in the first or second week of January. They're currently collecting metrics and talking to those communities about how that order should look, and then that list will come before this body, and you all will get to choose who goes first.
And Madam President and Ms. Schultz, so is it possible that this is sort of duplicative of that process? In other words, if the Planning Department comes forward and says, we want to begin CPAs with the areas that include these neighborhoods, part of this planning and conversation process would happen anyway? Is that how I understand the CPAs would happen?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, I think so. This would just offer additional opportunities on top of what the CPA process intends to offer starting in June of next year.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So is there a second on the -- oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Madam President. So this kind of guts my bill, and so I'm the original sponsor on this bill, and this is the first I've seen of this floor substitute. And so, you know, we talked about both of us sponsoring this, and then you're gutting my bill without me even having the opportunity to look at it or discuss this, which kind of makes me a little angry, and I'm not going to support this one. And so I'm going to vote it down. I think what we need to do is look at all neighborhoods. If we have the votes, we have the votes. If we don't, then we move forward with what's going on, so I'm not going to support it.
So Counselor Winter, this was actually introduced at the committee, at the committee level, so it should have been in one of your packets. So is there a second? So there's a motion and a second on the floor for floor sub R 204. All those in favor say yes. Counselor Benton.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because these, it looks like four of the five specific neighborhoods are in District 2. I wanted to ask, is there a sector plan for Atresco?
Madam President, Counselor Benton, I don't believe that there was a, a sector plan that covered that area before the IDO was adopted.
So I guess I asked the sponsor, how would that work since there wasn't a sector plan to be reviewed in Atresco?
So, so, okay. Go ahead.
Madam President, Counselor Benton, this floor substitute differs a little bit from the base bill in that what Counselor Winter's initial proposal said was that we would look at existing sector plans across the whole city. What Counselor Peña's floor sub says is that we would look at areas that had sector plans in the past, or that should otherwise exist in the future. So her floor sub contemplates, contemplates additional protections that might not have existed in the past, but that should potentially exist in the future.
All right, Madam President, I just, I, I want to go on the record here with my vote on this. I absolutely support the neighborhood protections that existed in the old sector plans. Those protections, every effort, as far as I know, where they were relevant, were rolled into the IDO. In some cases, they were implemented citywide; in other cases, they were implemented as part of character protection overlays. The concern that I have is not that I don't support those neighborhood protections, or that we shouldn't be absolutely sure, and I agree, we should be absolutely sure that any relevant protection that was in the old sector plans, new or old, updated or never updated, 1979 or 2006, that they should be, they should be, we should do a checklist of sorts and make sure that we've done that. But my understanding is that the planning department did go through that process as part of the, the writing of the IDO, and that doesn't mean something might, might not have slipped through the cracks. But here's the concern I have, is it's related to the question that, that Counselor Davis raised, which is, I mean, going forward, we have a process laid out that's set to commence this, in the new year, early in the new year, set to commence to do the community planning area process, and I think the important question that, that was, that needs to be understood is, we have a policy to consider the most needy neighborhoods first. I mean, I think that's going to be a discussion this council makes, and there may be some parochial disagreements about those, those issues, but we know that certain areas of, of the community planning areas are most likely going to rise to the forefront because of the disadvantaged neighborhoods within those community planning areas and the special needs within those areas. So to me, also, I should add, that at the committee meeting, the director of planning stated that the planning department was not really in a capacity, in, doesn't have the capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Williams, but that, that to do both of these things concurrently, that this would require a slowdown of the CPA process, and that's what I'm concerned about. So I think I read you correctly on that question at, at the committee, but, but for that reason, I can't support either of these, actually, because I think we've got it laid out before us how to address this very question, that if there is some protection that, that was not included from an old sector plan, or some protection that should be, regardless of whether it was included or not, in the IDO, in any specific area, through either of those mechanisms, that, that's the way to move forward with this. Otherwise, where it looks to me like, based on the capacity of the department and funding and so forth, there's no funding attached to this, that it would be a delay of, of four months or more in the, in the implementation and the commencement of the CPA process.
Well, thank you, Counselor Benton. I actually put forth this kind of dwindle-down version because I knew that, you know, the 60-plus and having those additional meetings and the fact that we do kind of have a process in place as we move forward, I was just looking at it as an opportunity to really look at how, how we look at those communities, just aside from even the IDO process, and, and what we can do to, to highlight such unique quality that we have in our community with these historic neighborhoods that, you know, predate the city of Albuquerque. So, you know, I appreciate your comments. I really didn't feel that the original resolution, based on the committee meeting, was going to pass, so, you know, I put this forth, but I, I'm more than, well, not more than, but I, I think I will withdraw my motion and just be back on Resolution 204 as, as presented this evening. So I will turn it over to Counselor Winter to close.
Thank you, Madam President, and I think we've debated this quite a bit, and so I'll just, we do have a motion, do we have a motion in a second, and urge your support.
So there's a motion, a second, for Resolution 204. All those in favor say yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, no, and raise your hand?
No.
So that's four, three. Okay, next item is Resolution 211, and this is adjusting fiscal year 2019 appropriations for certain funds and programs to provide for actual expenditures and adjusting fiscal year 2020 operating and capital appropriations. I move a due pass.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, for a due pass. Looks like we have someone here to...
Madam President and city councilors, no, I just wanted to let you know that if you do have specific questions, I'm here representing the budget offices, as well as Jane Alanda. We also have several department directors here, so we, if you do have some questions, we're, we're here to, to help you with those.
Thank you. We may, so I know we have a couple of amendments here, and we have one from Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move amendment number one, floor amendment number one, on page four, after line 20, insert the following. Office of the Inspector General, Office of the Inspector General 3,000. A total of 103,000 in this program strategy is designated for a full-time recurring inspector position and will replace $100,000 of non-recurring funds previously appropriated for inspector contractual services. I move approval.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Madam President, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask one follow-up question on the amendment, if you could...
Counselor Davis.
Hold the vote. I just wanted to ask the sponsor, and I know Ms. Bramlett's here. We did appropriate some one-time dollars for contractual work. Do we have any indication on how much of that has been used, or whether that seems to be, moving forward, that it would justify a full-time position?
I believe we'd have to ask the Inspector General that question. If you don't mind coming down, sir.
Madam President, Counselor Davis.
Ken, use that other one there.
Get it right here in a minute. The excellent person that we have in that position right now has only been there since the first of October. It took us a while to find somebody that met our standards, and they're doing a wonderful job. They've been there since the first of October, so they've only spent about $8,000, $10,000 of the $100,000.
But Madam President and Mr. Bramlett, are they doing a full-time workload, even though they're a contractor? There's enough work there to justify that ongoing work, and you anticipate that to stay the same?
That's correct. They're doing 40-plus hours a week.
Thank you, Madam President. I would support this. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So there's a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I move floor amendment number two. This reads on page four, after line 13, insert the following. Economic development, $40,000. And this has to do with a city obligation to the state Main Street program that was overlooked, and I believe it's supported by the administration, but correct me if I'm wrong.
So there's a, a motion, a second, on the floor for floor amendment number two. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. I have another one in my hand. I do not know who it belongs to. Is this Counselor Davis?
Madam President, floor amendment number three would read as follows, on page three, strike lines 30 through 31, and replace with the Office of the City Clerk program to pay for election-related costs. This just ensures that any money left over in the current election fund remains there and is available to get prepared for the next election, which always seems to come up clearer than we think.
So there's a motion, a second, for floor amendment number three. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Any other questions? No one signed up to speak? So there's a motion, a second, for Resolution 211 as amended. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. There be no further business. This city council meeting is adjourned.